Justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna open up public hearing. We're gonna be discussing any comments or concerns. Village of Webster intent to seek the Brownfield Opportunity Area designation from New York State in pursuit of the nomination study that was completed.
Great. I think we're gonna start with a presentation first.
Oh.
And then do the question and answer afterward? Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Well, we have time to prepare for the first, then the public hearing, then the actual.
Just regular?
We have our public comments. That should probably be something, don't you think?
Sure.
Just every meeting is required to have one, not it's unrelated to the public hearing.
Legally speaking, that's not true, but there's no requirement that you have to open to the floor at any time.
I know that. We typically do.
At any town or village, community or meeting.
All right, so we will open up the public comments section if anybody wants to come up to the podium and move over here. Tale free. All right, since we have nobody, we'll close that portion of the meeting and go into question and answers.
All right. Wonderful. I'm gonna do a quick introduction here. Matt Chatfield, Executive Director, Webster Economic Zone Alliance. Been a long time coming. We've been working very hard to get to this point. The village was awarded a little over $200,000 at the end of 2022. No, actually, 2021. And in 2022, we got under contract with Bergman Associates/Kollers to begin the master planning process for the area surrounding.
Is that accurate?
I think we started in 2023.
So we were awarded the funds in 2022. That's how long has been? And then the consultants were selected, Bergman Associates at the time, which is now Collers Engineering Design, had completed the master plan for the Brownfield Opportunity Area Study area, which is what we're calling the north end of the village. And Kimberly is here tonight to go over the final master plan and take questions from the board. And then the next steps after that would be to formally submit the document and all public comments at the close of the 30-day comment period, which closes midway through November. All of those comments, plus the master plan, will be submitted to the state for a formal designation process, which could take somewhere in between four and six months. We all know how the state works. And then after that, being formally designated a Brownfield Opportunity Area, that physical, geographic part of our community is now incentivized for additional grant funds and/or incentives from the state for private development. So it's actually a great honor to be bestowed upon a community to go through that process and become a designated boa. No further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to Kimberly Baptiste. We're... Way to go. Perfect.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna provide, as Matt said, a high-level overview of the Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan, and then, of course, take any questions you may have. So I'm gonna explain some background about what the BOA is, talk about community engagement and how it really informed our planning process, and then walk through some highlights of the master plan itself. So the BOA program is a state program that provides financial and technical assistance to support revitalization efforts and develop a revitalization strategy for areas impacted by the presence of brown field sites. So that is how the WIDA, the town, the village, identified the study area boundaries for this particular BOA. It is a three-step process, so we are developing the plan, have developed the plan, which is the important first step. The second step, as Matt alluded to, is designation, and he talked about some of the benefits of being a designated BOA community, which is, I will talk in more detail about in a few slides. And then one of the other great benefits of having the actual full plan itself is having access to implementation funding. So wherever there is a need or gap identified within this plan of a next step as it relates to helping to advance a site to implementation or advancing some of the public projects identified in the plan, the BOA program will support implementation funding for pre-development activities. So it won't pay for actual construction, but will support, you know, filling in those gaps as it relates to where you need more information to facilitate redevelopment. So when we talk about the north end BOA, this is the BOA study area. So it's about 224 parcels covering about 500 acres of land. A portion of the BOA is within the village, a portion of the BOA is within the town of Webster as well. Overall project team, so as I mentioned, this is a state-funded program. The program is administered and overseen by the New York State Department of State. And we worked very closely with a project manager from the Department of State, Melissa Keller, throughout the duration of the project. Also worked very closely, obviously, with the village and the town, given that the study area extends between both municipalities. And then really being driven by WIDA is the economic development arm of both the village and the town. We are supported by a BOA steering committee, which I will talk more about in a moment. And then the consultant team, which really, you know, was responsible kind of for facilitating and coalescing all of the feedback that we got from stakeholders into the ultimate final document. In addition to Collers Engineering and Design, which really led the overall kind of project management direction of the process. We also have on our team Camoin Associates, which is a Nashville market economic firm. So they developed a market analysis. Lou Engineer, who really spearheaded the environmental, not investigations, but data collection. And then also Steel Land Cave Architects, which assisted with some of the public realm project identification and master planning. So benefits of the BOA. Matt kind of touched on this a little bit. I touched on this a little bit, but I would say it's one of the most robust planning programs offered by New York State. So it allows the community to come together and identify a vision for, again, an area of a community that maybe is seeing a lack of investment for, you know, could be a whole diversity of different reasons, but helps to kind of get the community energized, organized, thinking about the future of areas within, in this case, the town and village, that, you know, you are not seeing as much maybe investment or not enough leveraging of opportunity. Because we are really looking and focusing on brown field opportunities, we are identifying opportunities for specific sites to tap into other brown field funding that the state or federal government may offer. Once it is designated as a BOA, any property within the BOA boundary that pursues state funding will be given priority and preference for state funding. So, for example, any applications for, say, consolidated funding application process, so whether it's through Empire State Development for a private project or through, you know, another agency for a public project, there's actually a checkmark within the CFA that says, are you within a designated BOA? And any property within that boundary will be able to check that box and, again, get priority and preference for leveraging different state programs. As it relates to redevelopment, the Brownfield Cleanup Program is one of the state's main programs for helping to facilitate cleanup of brown field sites. Properties within a designated BOA also get additional tax credits if they go through the Brownfield Cleanup Program for their cleanup activities. So there are kind of technical benefits, but there are also very clear financial benefits for being designated a BOA. So informing the plan, just a quick recap of community engagement. So this really is intended to be kind of a ground-up planning process, really based on what we're hearing from key stakeholders and community members, property owners really driving the direction of the plan. So we had really a multi-pronged engagement strategy that included, obviously, regular project management meetings in coordination with the town, the village, and WIDA. Steering committee meetings, a kind of key milestones throughout the process. We held a number of one-on-one or small group stakeholder meetings with key property owners, had a variety of different public workshops and pop-up events to offer both formal, informal opportunities for the community to weigh in on the plan. And then also hosted a project website. So the final draft is available on the project website today, and I'll show that in just a moment. So hard to see all these names, but just did want to show kind of the steering committee list and recognize the steering committee members, because not only did they attend seven meetings over the course of about a 15-month planning process and volunteered their time to do so, but they were also given draft materials along the way that they reviewed and provided feedback and comments. So they did invest a significant amount of their own time to participate on the BOA steering committee. But their goal, again, was really to help drive the direction of the plan, help us really identify and refine strategic sites and think about redevelopment opportunities, and then provide feedback along the way. So public outreach. We did reach out to community members, as I mentioned, in a variety of different ways. So we had a number of public meetings where we said, hey, we'll be here on this date at this time, come talk to us about the plan. But we also had a number of different pop-ups at the summer celebration, Community Arts Day, you know, as part of the local school district. So provided some of those informal opportunities for people to learn about this program and provide feedback without, you know, having to come to us at a Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., for example. So there were multiple opportunities. We did reach out and partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, for example, to make sure we were getting a diversity of interests involved and engaged in the process as well. This is the project website if you haven't visited yet, www.revitalizewebster.com. So this was kind of the portal of information that was used over the course of the planning process. So we promoted all of our public meetings from this project website, had draft deliverables to the project website last year over the course of the process. And the community does have the ability to review the final draft plan via this website as well. We also did have a comments page that was incorporated onto the website, so throughout the process, people were urged to, you know, as they were laying in bed late at night and thought of a brilliant idea related to the planning process, they could log onto the website and send comments directly to our team. So the master plan itself, although we don't have slides on it, upfront, it was a lot of data collection. So our team spent a significant amount of time really making sure we understood existing conditions within the study area, both from the perspective of physical conditions. So we looked at everything from land use, zoning, obviously, environmental perspective, but really getting to know the physical attributes of the study area and each of the individual sites. Camoin Associates did a market study. Both of those combined with what we heard from the community really laid the foundation for understanding where we wanted to go and maybe what were some of the steps that we needed to take to kind of bridge the gap from where we are today to where we want to be in the future. Ultimately, that information coalesced into what you see on the screen, which is the master plan. The master plan's presented in both graphic form, is shown here, as well as narrative form in the actual light reading document as well. So the master plan really consists of a series of eight strategic sites. These were, again, identified based on feedback from the community as well as the steering committee on sites that have the greatest potential, if redeveloped, to really help to transform the overall study area. But in addition to those eight strategic sites, we also looked at kind of overall enhancements to the study area. So trail connections, street scape improvements, public spaces, corridors that would benefit from enhancement and additional investment. So walking through those in more detail, this slide is showing those eight strategic sites. So three of the strategic sites, five in total, are owned by Xerox. Three of them are on the east side of Phillips Road. Those three sites really focused on, I would say, remaining kind of active employment generators. So looking at strategic sites one, two, and three, again, on the east side of Phillips Road, really focusing on office, research, and development, light manufacturing-oriented uses, consistent with kind of the historic use of the Xerox campus. On the west side of Phillips Road, the West Campus site owned by Xerox is probably the most substantial redevelopment opportunity within the BOA, and we'll talk more about that. The final site owned by Xerox is on the south side of Orchard Street, just across from the West Campus site, which today is a vacant parcel. Strategic Site Six is located just south of that, on the other side of the trail, vacant, but over the course of our planning process was being redeveloped into flex industrial spaces. Strategic Site Seven is a privately-owned site that I will show another graphic about and talk more about. And then Strategic Site Eight is the Town Recreation Complex. You know, one of our stakeholder meetings, and we met with them a couple of times, but met with the recreation staff, talked about opportunities that they were looking at to explore to enhance the recreation complex and that site with enhancements that would really provide additional amenities to residents of both the town and the village. So we wanted to make sure that we captured them in the BOA plan, because, again, it does open up other opportunities for funding down the road. So Strategic Site Four, which, again, is the West Campus, the most substantive opportunity for really large-scale redevelopment within the BOA boundary. Key findings from the market analysis indicated that the greatest potential for development and investment within the BOA certainly lie within the residential sector. And then other opportunities kind of in the commercial service, employment-generating sectors, but to a smaller scale and in a way that is supportive of new residential development. So what you're seeing in this graphic, and just to acclimate you, you've got Phillips Road kind of on the right side of the screen and Orchard Street, so the Phillips/Orchard intersection. This is showing mixed-use development, so showing some substantial density, high-density redevelopment at that corner that consists of high-density residential on the upper stories and a range of, you know, service, retail, restaurant businesses on the lower level. Throughout the study, in addition to this high-density residential, we showed a variety of other types of residential development that could be included. So showing a diversity of housing types, given the size of the site, really allowed for a range of different types of uses. Some of that is reflected here, so also a strong desire to incorporate and maintain a significant amount of green space, not only for the users of this site, but again, just as an amenity for the larger community and something that really helped to connect and tie into the recreation complex as well. But this would create opportunities for future programming, entertainment-oriented uses as well, to help bring people into the north end. As I mentioned, a diversity of housing type. So in the upper left-hand corner of this image, you can see there are townhomes in the distance. So again, just another example of you've got the higher density at the Phillips/Orchard intersection, but also opportunities for townhomes and other scales of residential density throughout the site. As part of the BOA funding, again, great thing about BOA funding is it's flexible and really personalizable. So we were able to take some of the funding and develop a package that really highlighted the West Campus opportunity. So a package that could be used by Xerox is the current property owner when they're talking to potential buyers or interested developers. Could be used by WIDA, the town, the village, when talking to potential developers that are coming in and looking for opportunities. So really highlighting key findings from the BOA as it relates to kind of market, the existing physical characteristics of this particular site, and some of the opportunities that were identified through this process. Strategic Site Six, again, is that other Xerox property just across from the site we were just talking about. I believe that Xerox and the village are currently having conversations about potential transfer of this site to the village to help to facilitate this vision of creating a new public space on this parcel. In the short term, certainly the opportunity here is related to the fact that this is adjacent to a heavily utilized trail and would be a great location for a trailhead to accommodate trail users, create another kind of destination along that trail route. But certainly in the longer term, as you think about future redevelopment on the West Campus site, would be a great asset for future residents living there as well. So you can see in this graphic, this is a plan view. You've got the HoJack Trail alignment existing at the bottom of the slide, Orchard Street at the top of the slide, and Phillips Road to the right side of the slide. About two-thirds of that site is envisioned as really kind of green space that celebrates both the history of the community, but also provides amenities for the community and specifically some trailhead amenities. And then retaining a third of the site adjacent to that Phillips/Orchard intersection for potential future development, some type of service-oriented use that, again, could complement future development on the West Campus, but also just existing residents within the north end of the town and the village. These are just some of the 3D perspectives of what that proposed public park could look like. So you can see a parking area for that trailhead, right, so people could come park here, utilize that existing trail system, have the benefit of some of those amenities like restrooms, a picnic pavilion, kind of just having additional green open space, a playground, while also celebrating some of the rail history associated with the community. So a great opportunity to kind of better utilize this existing green and vacant space in a way that benefits community members. Strategic Site Seven, as I mentioned, a privately-owned site at the end of Commercial Street. So this is another example of a stakeholder that we were engaged with throughout the process. They really had a vision for what they could do with this property. That includes 150 Orchard Street as well as some of the properties along Commercial Street. So from a public perspective, integrating and strengthening the trail connection, also that runs along the south side of these properties, creating more formalized parking opportunities in an area where maybe it's not as formalized today. But then also looking at introducing new housing opportunities as well as small business opportunities within this section of Commercial Street. In addition to those strategic sites, the plan also talks about a variety of street scape improvements. Excuse me, looking at both Commercial and Donovan, and some minor improvements that can be made along those streets. Simultaneous along those streets based on existing uses and access needs, but certainly some minor opportunities to increase pedestrian safety and help green those streetscapes a little bit. But then also certainly looking at Route 250, improvements to Phillips Road. And WIDA and the village have been actively coordinating with Monroe County Department of Transportation on their proposed future project along Phillips Road. But we also identified a couple of future roadway extensions, so one of those being extending Toyota Drive to create a full connection between Route 250 and Phillips Road. And also the potential of extending Panama Road all the way down south of Orchard to connect to Donovan Street, which in the future could create some new development opportunities in the Donovan Street area. So this is just a rendering of the potential Toyota Drive extension. So to the west of Panama Road would be that new extension. And you can see some of the proposed new residential, you know, lower-density, single-family in this location tying to the surrounding existing residential. Also looked at gateways and placemaking, so identify major gateways at major intersections and decision points for vehicular and pedestrian and bicycle traffic, and then minor gateways. So all of these locations, it's envisioned that there would be improvements to kind of visually recognize that you've reached a decision point and that, you know, you're entering someplace special. So a variety of placemaking and safety improvements. This is the example from Phillips Road and Orchard, where it connects with San Jose Drive going into the Xerox campus. So you can see kind of some gateway signage features, really highlighting the Xerox campus on the upper right-hand corner of the slide, but then you can also see the amount of pedestrian and bicycle safety enhancements that were also proposed at this intersection. And then lastly, from the perspective of connectivity, looking at trail enhancements. So you already have a pretty robust trail network, but really thinking about how you can connect all of those existing trail networks and fill in some of the gaps in that network. So really kind of creating a continuous loop throughout the north end area. So we looked at the locations of some of those trail connections as well as locations for future trailheads. And here's just another example of where the trail crosses Phillips Road and enhancements that would improve safety and visibility for users. So all of those recommendations are coalesced into what we call implementation strategies. So this identifies each of those individual projects, breaks them down into various phases where applicable, provide planning-level cost estimates, timeframes, so thinking about priority in phasing of projects, potential funding sources, and then project heat for all of those. In addition to those various site-specific recommendations within the master plan, there were also a series of what we call area-wide strategies that were identified. So everything from, you know, updating the zoning code to, you know, thinking about design guidelines and marketing and promoting sites is just a few examples. Oh, but then I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Can we take a question for Roger?
Sure.
I had somewhere in my mind, perhaps erroneously, that a brownfield was a negative area, something that had been contaminated either by oils or chemicals. Is that a fact?
So the way that the state divides brownfield is it could be a contaminated site, or it could be a site that's vacant, underutilized, and perceived as a site that is detracting from potential investment within an area. But part of what this effort is intended to do is identify those sites that may have some level of contamination or risk and identify recommendations for future study of those sites to really understand what mitigation would be required prior to redevelopment.
Thank you.
Yeah, because there was a couple of them that had former buildings.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I understand that.
I'll send you a question.
It did also look to me like it might involve the area west of the Kittleberger place. Now, would that do away with some existing residential buildings? They would stay.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions?
Has there been a traffic study done at all, if we went to mixed-use housing and whatnot, because there's a lot of new developments down that way? Traffic's had a snarl many times in that area, so any more housing is a concern?
I believe, and Matt can weigh in, but with the work that Monroe County is doing on Phillips Road, I believe they were looking at traffic impacts. We gave them our numbers for like potential build-out, you know, number of potential new units, new square footages, different types of uses. units, new square footages, different types of uses, but I don't know if you want to give enough data on that.
So right now, the master plan is very conceptual, right? So upon a developer being identified, let's say for that large site, if they were to actually propose improvements, right, propose development for housing, a traffic study would be warranted based on the seeker requirement, right? They would have to go through the seeker process to understand potential impacts of the environment. That would include traffic. So at that time, a more robust traffic study would be done very much related to that. Globally, we are trying to work with Monroe County on their potential project, their future project to reconstruct and, I guess, rehabilitate Phillips Road. And it's also an opportunity for the town and/or village to request funds from like a sister agency to the state DOT. It's called the Genesee Transportation Council. They're in charge of all the federal transportation planning funds. That would be another study that could look at like the whole Xerox complex going out to Salt, Basket, and beyond to really try and understand that. So admittedly, traffic is a very major concern, and it does require more study. But there are several opportunities for that in the future.
I'm sorry, I missed introductions. Your name and your role?
I don't even know if I said it at the beginning. Matt introduced me, but I'm not sure I repeated it. I'm Kimberly Baptiste with Colliers Engineering and Design, and we are part of the consultant team that was hired by WIDA to facilitate this process.
You've got to turn this entire thing into the state, right? It's not a phased, a phased approach or what they want to see.
Yeah, the entire, the entire master plan, along with all the public comments that is received. So we should continue to promote the public comment. They should be, did we provide them an email address to comment to? Or are they sending comments to the office? How have you dealt with that in your, on your social media?
We put all of the socia ls, like they've commented on Facebook, they've called the office. We basically put any option to contact us.
Okay. Well, we just needed, we need a mechanism to consolidate the comments, that's all. And then, yeah, they'll get the full 200-page document with all the appendices and...
And there's a deadline for that, too. I was just curious, we did a special meeting, I certainly was...
Well, we want, yeah, I mean, we did the special meeting because we wanted to get the process moving. So our goal is to get it in there before, you know, this calendar year for certain year of that.
And just recognizing how long it may take once it's in their hands and wanting to make sure it's received its designation before the next round of CFAs.
Correct.
Opens up.
Which is in May. So getting it into their hands, giving them enough time, four to six months to go through their machinations so we can, the next CFA portal, we can actually check, yes, we're designated. So the next request for a transportation fund or engineering funds to redesign Donovan Street or Commercial Street, that it'll be looked upon favorably.
An upgrade for businesses that have been this position that has been right on that list for first-up grants and opportunity, that's amazing.
That's, yes, for other funding sources?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's a big win.
It's nice and sound.
And it dovetails really well with the New York Forward funding, the 4.5 million. They kind of, they work hand-in-hand, so it's...
Yeah, it's good.
It's a good thing. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Dave stole my thunder a bit on the, on the point out the brownfield. I think the perception was an important distinction, and it's not just areas that are contaminated, but it's, they can add the perception of contamination too, if they're a former industrial area, even if they're, you know, finding that they're clean. Those areas are also eligible, and they're within the study area. So, you know, that's important for the board down the line when they're making zoning decisions, obviously, if there's something that has a problem, you're not going to necessarily want to put house in there. But if you find an area that doesn't have an issue, man, it's suitable for housing. This is suitable for more, you know, additional commercial or industrial development, so... But I think that perception is a very important distinction. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it's a brownfield opportunity area, it's, you know, contaminated, it's something that has...
No, it's not, yeah, it's not all contaminated. And the next step does also allow for, if there's a willing property owner, to fund Phase Two investigations into their sites, right? So only if they're willing, right?
And there's some grants for that stuff as well.
Well, and that's exactly, this funding source would provide for that.
Okay.
Yeah. And it includes asbestos in a building, right? So it doesn't have to be anything that's necessarily in the soil, but, you know, we have older buildings that have asbestos in them. We kind of need to understand what's it going to take to either abate or maybe start over. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that take a minute? That's very good. Very efficient. So we announce again.
Paul Mop.
I think that's everything. Good, Dan? All right. Thank you. Village Board of Business. I don't know who, everybody took the case of administration passing. Somebody looking for a resolution to approve the 2024 mortgage tax review. Just have the ability of members to sign it. Maybe we all did, right? Everybody signed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll sign. Maybe not. Do we have a pass? I'll make that note.
I'll second. One for fans.
Yeah.
Paul?
Sure. Favor. All right.
Trusty Laverne?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy? Trusty Bucky? Trusty Belio?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Then I am going to be looking for a motion to approve the claims of the mortgage. I said a few. Carl and I. Did anyone have any questions on those? All right.
Trusty Lancy? Trusty Bucky?
Aye.
Trusty Belio?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Was it one I said in the beginning? Shows, you mean?
Halloween was a huge success.
It is. Had a lot of fun.
It was huge. You and Jerry, we're going to have candy and freeze.
That would be a lunch.
What about it?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. What time?
It will be, you'll be following the ceremony at 11:00, so around 11:30, or 11:30, sorry. And the, the, we'll be sponsoring a luncheon.
Excellent.
I'm talking this when you do. Before I kind of...
You're coming.
I know, he told me to say something there, so if I'm talking, it's going to be you when people are done.
And our very own, I've asked our very own Jason Lee, who is a veteran, to go down to St. Evers to, to the veterans.
You didn't say a few.
Very nice.
People.
Our next village board meeting will be Thursday, November 14th at 7:00. And then we will have a village board meeting on Tuesday, the 26th at 6:00 PM. I would assume that's due to the Thanksgiving holiday. 6 o'clock, Judy went down, I ate dinner, but we'll make some exceptions. That's one time. Yeah, it's okay. Chris, how's it going?
So far, so good.
Good?
Any complaints?
No.
Oh, try harder.
This is the longest we've gone without complaints in this.
Was this your one I sent you, Jake?
Yeah. No, so I got to the...
I put the card to the best of hope.
Not answering from...
Nobody else has any village business?
That's from Stride.
So that's Chris's personal stuff?
Oh, I'd like my place to Chris.
Oh, that's promotion.
Yeah, I got motion.
You want me to keep that private, then what your problem?
All in favor?
Aye.
I love that all in favor.
I watched Monday Night Football.
Been fun, I read.
Kansas City and Tampa, I think?
Oh, I know Kansas City gets...
Chelsea, Kansas City.
Kansas City's not going to get killed by Tampa.
I hope they don't.
I do, too.
Baker, Baker, the touchdown maker.
He does come off aggressive sometimes.
Did you see the backward turtle yesterday?
Oh, my God, Barkley.
Yeah, see, yeah. What?
That's a freak.
That's something else.
It's been a while.
I'm taking one through the wash and it broke. I did that one last time, I thought you, yes.
Well, good seeing everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Thanks, Derek. Thank you.